All right. All right, so we're going to begin the Urbana City Council Committee of the Whole Meeting. It's forty minutes after the hour. I'd like to call the meeting to the order. Would the clerk please call our roll?
City Council Members Brown?
Here.
Hershey?
Here.
Jacobson?
Here.
Miller?
Here.
Roberts?
Here.
Wu?
Here.
Mayor Marlin.
Okay. We have the minutes of our previous meeting to approve. This is minutes from February 3rd, 2020.
And February 17th.
And, yes, on the 17th as well, yes.
Moved to approve.
I'll second.
Okay, moved by Sharice. Jared Miller takes the second. Were there any corrections to the minutes? I don't see any corrections. All in favor to get by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, those are approved. All right, would there be any additions to our agenda tonight? Okay, I see none. Thank you. There is going to be one change. We're going to be holding back item number nine, which is an ordinance which is going to, was to authorize the purchase of a certain real estate parcel. That deal hasn't really been completed yet. There's some technicalities to it, so we're going to be seeing that again at a future time on the City Council. All right, we're going to now go to public input. And we're going to have also, do you want to do the appointments first, Mayor? Should we? Might as well. Let's do that.
Okay.
We have applicants for Ward Six, and I will introduce the individuals.
Yes, we invited applicants for the position vacated by Dean Hazen to speak tonight for three minutes. We have a total of five applicants. Four applicants are here tonight. Joe Smith was not able to be here tonight. He's with his wife on a surprise anniversary trip, so we did not ask him to cancel that trip. But he has provided a written statement that has been distributed to the council members. So we'll go in alphabetical order and invite you to come up to the microphone and just speak into the microphone. Either one is fine. First is Bill Culbrook.
My name is Bill Culbrook. I reside with my wife and family in the Stone Creek subdivision. My wife and I moved our family from a nearby community to Urbana in 2014. We did so for two reasons. We wanted to experience on a daily basis the history, culture, and values of this community, and we wanted our kids to attend Urbana schools due to the diversity in Urbana. By serving on the City Council, I would be in a position to bring about positive change for the current residents and for prospective individuals and families, just like my wife and I, as we searched for a community that reflected our lifestyle and values. I have lived a life of service my entire adult life. I wish to continue to serve in this additional capacity with an appointment to the City Council. I have a bachelor's degree from Illinois State University. Professionally, I have been in law enforcement for thirty-four years. I am a retired captain from the Illinois State Police. While serving with the State Police, I gained knowledge and experience with the legislative process as I have testified in both the House and the Senate on legislative issues. I am currently the Chief of Police and Director of Public Safety at Parkland College. As a local Chief of Police, I am also an active member of the Champaign County Community Coalition, seeking to find solutions to the persistent gun violence and charting a path for a better life for our citizens, especially our youth. There are several issues that I believe are critical to the future of our city and to our citizens. Just some of the issues that I intend to work on are, first, the economic viability of various business districts, including the downtown, which includes the Lincoln Square Mall and the historic Landmark Hotel, the University Avenue, Cunningham Avenue, High Cross Road, and Philo Road corridors. As we know, the health and vitality of a city can be gauged to some extent on the quantity and quality of business and commerce that occurs. Second, the continued gun violence in our community. It is my belief, regardless of where the shootings occur in Urbana, or frankly, across town to our west, the incidence of violence affect all of us, regardless of where we live or work. And third, the impending repurposing of the Stone Creek Golf Course and how that may impact property values and the quality of life for the residents and the community. To conclude, I hope you find my experience and vision for the City of Urbana and Ward Six to be highly qualified in order to be appointed to fill the vacant Ward Six seat. Mayor Marlin and City Council, thank you for your time and attention.
Well timed.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Bill. Next up is Tom Hebert.
My name is Tom Hebert, and I've been a resident of Urbana for over thirty years. I arrived in Urbana in 1987 to attend the University of Illinois. My wife Laura and I bought our first house just blocks from here in 1992. Our son Jonathan was born in 2000, and he has journeyed through the Urbana school system from kindergarten through high school. In that time, Urbana has given me and my family so much: the great neighborhood parks, park district sports, fire safety with firefighter Phil, watching marching band performances at Sweet Corn festivals, and Saturday's market at the square. I have a lasting fondness and appreciation for these and many other experiences. When I think about our community, I think about it as a tapestry. So a tapestry has two parts: the warp or main lines or thread, which are the supports for the other component called the weft, that crosses over, under, and through, and gives tapestry color and texture. I see every individual in this community as a beautiful part of the weft, filling it with life, meaning, and vibrancy. I see this chamber and these members and the Urbana City Government as the builders of the warp, each member taking in the tapestry as a whole, collectively ensuring that there is balance, strength, and durability. And it's these ideals that would guide me as a member of City Council: balance, strength, and durability. I would seek a balance between the concerns of the residents and those of the businesses, to balance the needs to the services, to balance growth with livability, and to balance development with nature. I will strive to maintain, support, and prove the strength of our city, which is rooted in the safety and security provided by police and fire protection, and further strengthened by neighborhood watches and concerned citizens. Urbana's strength is also in the value and attractiveness of the quality of neighborhoods, parks, and businesses, which are reinforced by public services, facilities, and infrastructure. Finally, durability entails the actions that will bring Urbana into the future, the way forward guided by science, research, and data. We must not only plan for ourselves, but we must plan for generations after us. Durability is built through sustainability, resilience, economic and educational equity, and justice. If appointed, I vow to respect the concerns of every resident, to be an active listener, to practice empathy, to deliberate honestly, and to do my best to make informed decisions based on the needs of the community. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. Next up is Andrew Miller.
So first of all, I'd like to thank the mayor and the City Council for giving me the opportunity to talk to everybody. And most importantly, I'd like to thank Dean for his service. I've heard nothing but positive, and I wish him the best. My name is Andrew Miller. I'm a software engineer at the University of Illinois. I've lived in Urbana for about ten years. I've owned a home in Urbana for seven years. I've pretty much been in the area my whole life. I grew up in St. Joseph. I'm a graduate of Southern Illinois University, Carbondale. Some of the involvement with the community is I am a member-at-large of the Savannah Green Homeowners Association. And some of the reasons why I think I'd be a great candidate for this position is I enjoy meeting business owners and talking to them about the problems in the community, and I hope to give neighbors and business owners a voice. Thank you.
Thank you. And last to speak tonight is Darius White.
Good evening, and thank you for the opportunity. I am excited and proud to apply for the appointment for Ward Six City Council. I look forward to the opportunity to represent everyone in Ward Six fairly. I will do so by actively listening to the concerns of all our community members with the goal of building a better Urbana, one that thrives economically and maintains its wonderful small-town values in our neighborhoods. We live in a great city, and I would love to work with you all, to be a team member, to continue to work on the City Council's and Mayor priorities, to make Urbana an even better place to live, work, and play. Together, establishing plans of sustainability for our local businesses, providing leadership trainings for community members to get involved in boards and commissions, to developing the Philo Road Business District and Lincoln Square. Through my participation of the Civilian Police Review Board and Community Development Commission, I believe I have shown a commitment to improving my skills, to be better equipped to serve Urbana. I joined the Civilian Police Review Board with the desire to improve relationships and build a bridge that both officers and community members feel comfortable about crossing. I joined the Community Development Commission to assist in the decisions of making of capital improvement programs that affects not only my ward but Urbana in all. I have taken both roles seriously, and I conduct myself with integrity, honesty, and commitment, and I intend to be true to those values that I do for the city. I advocate for diversity and inclusion, and I would love for our council to reflect our diverse communities. I did not apply for the Ward Six City Council for just myself, but for my son's future in this city, for every person that looks like me, and for every young adult who is interested in local government, to be an example that we are accepted, we have the capability to do the work, and that it is never too early to step up and contribute to your city. I plan on living in this city for a long time, and will always want to play an active role in making sure Urbana is a great place for our residents, our businesses, tourists, and, most importantly, the children of our communities. Thank you for this opportunity.
Thank you. So I want to sincerely thank all the applicants for this position and your families as well who are here tonight. I hope to have a decision for you by, bring an appointment to council by next Monday. And it's going to be really difficult. So I will welcome input from the City Council.
Do you want me to read this?
From Joe? Sure. And we'll, Charlie will read into the record the message from Joe Smith.
So this is from, to Urbana City Council and Mayor. Thank you for this opportunity to address the council and prepare a written statement introducing myself to you. I'm sorry I'm unable to attend the March 2nd meeting. I am currently in Florida with my wife Linda, celebrating our fifteenth anniversary at Walt Disney World. It was planned well in advance as a surprise to her. First, a little family background. My wife and I built our house on Mark Trail in 2004. I have lived in Ward Six since 1989 for a total of thirty-one years and have actually lived in the Urbana-Champaign area for fifty-five of my sixty-six years. I know my way around the city very well. I have two sons and three stepsons that have all moved on with successful careers and starting families of their own. We are enjoying our grandparenting duties very much, with two in Iowa and one on the way here in Urbana. I completed my college education at the University of Illinois at the Urbana campus in 1975, earning a Bachelor of Science in Civil Engineering. And two weeks after my graduation, I was hired by the City of Urbana Public Works Department as a civil engineer. I've worked in public works as a registered professional engineer and held titles as civil engineer, city traffic engineer, senior civil engineer, assistant city engineer, and a short stint as acting city engineer. I served on the traffic commission for over twenty-five years and was a member on many staff committees that required my technical expertise. I retired in July of 2014 after thirty-nine years of service. As a longtime city employee, I have gained a thorough understanding of council procedures, committees, commissions, and budget processes, and can hit the ground running. I also have a significant knowledge of the public infrastructure and traffic safety needs of this city. Being on the City Council would be an honor and a way for me to give back to the community that I love and that has supported and encouraged me and my family. I am proud to say that I have lived here and believe in our future. Sincerely, Joe Smith.
Thank you.
Okay, very good. So that completes the introduction of the candidates for Ward Six, and we hope to hear from the mayor next week concerning possible selection. And before we leave public input and presentations, we do have two people who would like to go on record, and I'm going to read them. The Reverend Dr. Evelyn B. Underwood would like to go on the record, although she does not choose to address the members, that we continually are concerned about the Dr. Ellis subdivision sewer problems. Second individual who would also like to have their opinion entered into the record but would not wish to address the council, the committee of the whole, is Elderess Melinda Carr, and she also expresses continued concern concerning the Dr. Ellis subdivision sewer issues, equity, and historic impact. We do have one other person who will be speaking at the time that the item comes before our City Council, and that is Tammy Masters. And actually, I guess that's no. Considering that we were just talking about it, please, please, you have about five minutes, maximum.
Okay, I shouldn't need that long. Do I need to push this?
No, you're good.
Okay, good. So I'm Tammy Masters, and I am the coordinator for the Country Squire Edition Neighborhood Watch, which is in Ward Six. I also am the lead on Nextdoor, which is an app a lot of you are probably familiar with, and that includes everything from Washington to Florida with my Neighborhood Watch there and on all the way to Florida, and then the Smith Road area and all that newer, the newer houses for low-income. So I just felt like I should be present since I'm involved so much in that area and it's a part of Ward Six. A couple of things I wanted to try to just express that are continual concerns with what I've seen with people within the Neighborhood Watch and on Nextdoor would be, obviously, the crime issues with addiction and mental illness. So kind of, we want someone that's appraised of those issues within our community and what areas are impacted within our ward, and, you know, ideas and input within City Council to try to address those without being impactful on a community of color type thing that we see. So we need to consider so much as a City Council when it comes to crime impact and stuff like that. A lot of times, there are needs to address that are mental illness and addiction and poverty that I feel like, I feel like we just, we need people on the council that know how to address those. Also, the other thing that my neighborhood has been considerably concerned about, especially with some of the older houses in my neighborhood, they're fifty years old, a lot of them are going to landlord, and typically tenants don't take as good a care of their property. And I know we have in Urbana, we have a lot of laws on those types of things, but I noticed just driving around my neighborhood, sometimes the street repairs aren't kept up as well. And the houses, a lot of times, there's like algae growing on them, and it's, you know, not pleasant for the neighborhood. And especially with some of the poverty and some of the landlords in our area, programs to maybe help those people have a program to do some cleanup around their house to make our community look nice year-round. So, and then the other thing would be, as the coordinator for Neighborhood Watch, if we have a watch party, I would like an alderman that would be present and available for us to come to an event and represent, you know, City Council that way also. So those were just the little concerns I wanted to express in your choice. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, that ends, it looks like, the public input for tonight, unless there's another individual who needs to come forward at this time. Okay, thank you then. We'll go down now to the staff report. Will there be one?
Annual Consolidated Action Plan.
Okay. Oh, Collins, all right, yes, we do. We have the annual consolidated action plan update. Jumping ahead a little bit too fast. Thank you, Sheila Dodds, for Community Development.
So, good evening. This is just public input, oh, thank you, Charlie. To let you know that our five-year consolidated plan and our one-year annual action plan is available for public review. You should have received a link to it on Friday afternoon. It's quite a lengthy document, so I'm just going to summarize a few bullet points about this year's plan. The five-year consolidated plan is required by the Department of Housing and Urban Development. It provides guidance for planning and implementation of our federal funds. The City of Urbana receives Community Development Block Grant as well as home funds. Since the City of Urbana acts as the lead agency for the home funds, we are responsible for the implementation of the plan. The plan is devised by City of Champaign, City of Urbana, and the Champaign County Regional Plan Commission. Those agencies share the pot of home funds, but each city is responsible for its Community Development Block Grant funding allocations. Staff from the City of Urbana and Champaign, Champaign County Regional Plan Commission, as well as other stakeholders, provided input on the plan. Community plans such as the CU Public Health Community Plan and the Champaign County Housing Authority Move-to-Work Plan were also reviewed. Some highlights of the plan is the data used in the analysis for the plan comes from the 2010 census and the 2011 to 2015 Comprehensive Housing Affordability Strategy, or CHAZ data. CHAZ data is created for HUD from the U.S. Census data. The purpose of the CHAZ data is to demonstrate the number of households in need of housing assistance. The public input process started in July of 2019, and it will continue through the end of March. The initial process in July was an online survey. Information on the survey was shared at the farmer's market, social media, and with social service agencies, as well as in the general public. City staff also created a shorter version to lead discussions at community meetings. One hundred and thirty-two survey responses were received, and over twenty public input meetings were held to capture a broader audience. This year, staff attended existing meetings to try to reach a broader audience. In the past, meetings were held in the evenings in targeted neighborhoods which had little attendance. By changing this process, more people were able to provide input. The analysis of data, existing plans, key stakeholder interviews, and public input from citizens were all used to determine the current community needs and to develop recommended priority areas. Priority needs outlined by this process are: infrastructure improvements were identified by all groups as a high need in the community. These include things such as street lighting, streets, and sidewalk repairs. Housing rehabilitation is continued as a high need. That includes housing modification to allow seniors to continue to live in their homes, emergency repairs such as roof, sewer, furnace, accessibility repairs, et cetera. Public service programs, programs for youth such as education, after-school programs, financial education for low-income families, and services to address homelessness were identified as the public service programs. Economic development opportunities, funding to support programs or services that create business retention and our jobs in low to moderate-income neighborhoods. And then provide affordable housing opportunities for low- to moderate-income households. This would include a variety of affordable housing options such as rental assistance programs, workforce housing, as well as tiny homes, where some ideas discussed. Rent assistance through the tenant-based rental assistance, as well as down payment assistance programs. Reducing exposure to lead-based paint, funds to support education, testing, and rehabilitation. And then finally, to continue to support the continuum of service providers to the homeless, to address the homeless issues in our community. The twenty to twenty-four five-year plan has also included at the end of it a code enforcement plan, citizen participation plan, and a housing rehabilitation manual. These plans are usually adopted as part of the five-year process but can be amended during the time period if need be. The final plan will also include a home program manual which identifies the procedures and HUD guidelines to implement home-funded projects. We're going to a conference next week, and so if there's any changes, I wanted to make sure to include them in that manual, so I held off putting it in. The Code Enforcement Plan is a new document. The city is focusing a more targeted effort on providing services and having inspections by community development target area, which will hopefully show a greater impact. The citizen participation plan has one major change. The definition for what constitutes a major amendment was changed to read. The amendment proposes any change in the allocation or distribution of funds, activity or recipient, and the dollar of that amount to change is equal to or greater than twenty-five percent of the current fiscal federal grant activity, where the old plan limit was fifty thousand. And the difference that makes to City Council is fifty thousand was the higher limit prior to this recommended change, and next year it would be a hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars. With the new grant-based accounting system, funds will have to be reallocated every year, and hopefully, this will make the budget amendment process move through quicker. The Housing Rehab Manual does not have any major changes, however, is included as part of the consolidated plan adoption process. For the 2021 Annual Action Plan, our federal allocation is going to be five hundred and one thousand, four hundred and fifteen dollars for the block grant funds. And from that, we've broken it down into five categories. Administration is ten percent, hundred thousand, two hundred and eighty-three dollars. Public services, transitional housing, cleanups, our consolidated social service funding is sixty-one thousand. Neighborhood revitalization programs to include capital improvement projects, light reduction, code enforcement, public facility improvements, economic development opportunities, two hundred and fifteen thousand, one hundred and thirty-two dollars. Housing-related programs and program deliveries such as our emergency and accessibility repairs, senior repair, and acquisition-demolition projects is a hundred and twenty-five thousand. And then finally, the City of Urbana's portion of the home allocation is a hundred and seventy-eight thousand, seven hundred and twenty-two dollars this year, and that's identified as workforce housing development and the tenant-based rental assistance program. So the next steps in this process is the plan is out for public review and comment through March 31st. A second public hearing will be held at the Community Development Commission on March 24th. Public comments received during this thirty-day time period will be incorporated into the final plan. Staff anticipates bringing the final plan to the Committee of the Whole Meeting on April 6th, and then final adoption and approval must happen prior to May 15th to allow staff time to submit it to HUD.
Okay, are there questions? Yes, Bill?
Yeah, first on the survey of the hundred and thirty-two received, do you remember how many were from Urbana?
I do not. I didn't do the tally of that, but I can get you that information.
Okay, because that would be Champaign and Urbana.
Yeah, we, because the plan addresses the community as a whole, we...
Did you get surveys from outside of Champaign-Urbana, too?
No.
Okay. And then also in the survey respondents, the demographics didn't really seem to reflect the CDBG target areas, although it does say average household income of eighty-eight thousand. I mean, you know, you have a Bloomberg in there, that could drive it up pretty high.
Right, right.
Do you have a median income for the survey responses?
The survey was the first piece of the citizen participation plan we did, and we recognized that the responses that we got really didn't represent the targeted areas. And so we created a shorter survey that really was a one-page, kind of highlighted the things that were eligible for the block grant funds. And then when we went out to community meetings, we used that as our guiding discussion points and... and got, you know, much clearer representation from those meetings.
Okay. If you could find out what the median income of the responses was rather than the average, that would help, too.
For the one survey?
Yeah, for the first, the longer survey.
Sure.
And then I just, I didn't get a chance to read all 384 pages yet.
Yeah.
But I did kind of glance at it over the weekend, and one thing I saw was a kind of dismissal that we don't have homeownership opportunities for lower-income people. But when you look at, like, I know in my ward, say between Wiley School and Candlestick Lane, there's a lot of houses that sell for less than $100,000, and with interest rates at, what, three or four percent? If they can qualify for a loan, it's much more affordable than an $800 or $900 rent, even when you put in property taxes and everything. But, so, the homeownership opportunities, I think, could be explored more and maybe not dismissed so out of hand. I guess the community reinvestment program would be part of that, but does that program receive any CDBG money, or is that completely separate?
The community reinvestment group, no, they do not. They're a group of local lenders that help us design down payment assistance programs or outline other bank reinvestment in the community. So maybe we decide to apply for federal home loan bank monies, one of those banks would help us do that application process. Or if we decide to apply for money through the Loan and Housing Development Authority, that group would be key in helping us get those funds. So they're really the bankers in town. We have heard from them because this pot of money can also be layered with others that can make a big difference on helping a lower-income person have access to credit and down payment monies, but they're still saying it's a high need, that they're just not getting the people, the lower-income people, to be able to qualify and apply for the loans. So that's another reason why the financial education was a key component, too, because maybe that mixed with down payment would provide access to homeownership.
How'd that work at Habitat? As long as we have the years of resource for Habitat, did they, people that get the Habitat houses, do they have to qualify, or?
They do. They go through a similar underwriting process like a conventional homeowner does. The difference is it's the best loan in town, it's 0% interest, there's usually no fees involved, so all fees are absorbed by the nonprofit. And then they usually have access to some pretty deep down payment money. So the typical Habitat house might sell for $100,000, and if you were in that 30% to 50% median family income range, you could qualify for a $20,000 down payment. So that makes a big difference. Many of the Habitat homebuyers have mortgages that are 20 to 22-years in term, and their mortgages are, with their taxes and insurance escrowed, run around $600 a month. So they go into homeownership with a savings.
Okay, yeah, I actually, I looked up some houses on Laurel Drive. It's a short street with about 16 houses in there, and I think about half of them are owned by one person.
Yeah.
And they rent for about $800 a house, and they're assessed $60,000. And if you do the math, you can, your mortgage payment with insurance and taxes and everything would be about $500. So it's more affordable to buy in a lot of cases, and I just, it seems like there ought to be a better way to make that happen.
And some of the challenges that come with using the home money, that property has to be up to code at the time that it sells. And many times, those older housing units are good fixer-uppers, but they don't necessarily qualify for this money, and then because they aren't 100% up to code. And so that lower-income family, why they might move into a home with a savings, they don't have the ability to bring it up to code. So those are some of the challenges that we're looking at as we look at different programs to make it more accessible.
Okay, Jared?
One question I was curious about when I was reading through some of this, and Bill, you kind of hit on it, but I know that FICO recently changed how they're going to score credit scores, and two out of the three larger credit companies have said that they're going to follow those new scores. Do you see that adversely, even more adversely affecting applicants who are trying to seek homeownership? Because everything that I've read seems like it's going to make people who don't have credit or have bad credit even harder for them to get credit in the future.
Yep. I absolutely think it's going to make it more difficult. And one of the other projects we're working on, you might see as you go through this plan, is there is a big difference between African-American homebuyers having access to credit versus non-African-Americans. And so we're not sure what that reason is, but that's what the data from the census and the CHAZ have shown. And so we're working with the community reinvestment banks to talk about, you know, what does the HUD data show, and where did that come from, and why aren't they having the same access that everyone else has? What are those barriers? And then what can we do to address those barriers?
Are we considering, once we know a little bit more about that, having something to say about that in our comprehensive plan?
In the comprehensive plan?
Yeah.
Sure, sure. That's all going to be a piece of this. You know, the comprehensive plan is separate from the consolidated plan, but in some ways they very much work together to make opportunities for affordable housing.
I said comprehensive, I meant consolidated, but yes, they will go, they will come together at one point as well, so. Just, I'm sure you were aware of that, I just know that I was reading it, and I was reading about that.
Right.
And I had similar thoughts to Bill in thinking, man, this is, you know, the challenges just keep increasing.
Right, right. And it's not lost on the community. There was an Affordable Housing Panel last week that Bill attended at the Housing Authority where there were several speakers there that, you know, it's just rent, it's not just rent assistance, it's not homeownership. We can't build ourselves out of this affordable housing thing. There's just a lot of pieces of a puzzle that need to come together to make a difference nationally.
Thanks.
Sharice?
I just wanted to add, because you were talking about the difference in how in African-American homeownership and, well, there are a lot of covenants that were written within sales of homes and stuff, and some of those still stick. We may not think so in the 21st century, but they, some of them are still there. And as well as federally, it had been put in place that as a segregation type of, everybody likes to live closer to their own type of thinking, a lot of banks would not loan, and that may be something that if you look at the history of the loaners, you know, my parents had to go to West Virginia to get a loan for their house. So, I mean, they didn't physically go there, but that's where they had to apply to get the loans for their houses, for their homes. So it, I think when you dig more, you'll see historically that it's, some of those particular prejudices still apply when it comes to African-American. And the fact that we on, as diaspora in this country, do not make the money. We don't seem to hit a particular income level more often than not.
Right.
That is required by certain people, and that was also another way of keeping Black people from homeownership, so.
Yeah, the Community Reinvestment Act had hoped to address some of that, but unfortunately, there's some legislation pending right now at the federal level that's going to have huge changes to the CRA if it goes through. And one of those is, you used to be able to count if you served a family in a targeted neighborhood whether they were low-income or not, because everybody is for mixed-income housing. You want people of different races and different income levels to be able to all live together. Now that's going to change to where they're not going to focus their efforts on the low-income targeted neighborhoods, they're going to just focus their effort on the person. And so a lot of people in this field are doing some scrambling, writing letters to Congress saying, you know, please rethink this process because to dismantle the Community Reinvestment Act is going to set us back to the 1950s, and we all know how bad that was with redlining.
Yeah, and it still exists, so that's how it goes.
Yes, Eric?
What is the legal and practical status of leases or sales agreements that contain language that would today be illegal? So, I mean, the documents exist, but presumably those clauses would no longer be enforceable, for example, a racial, a clause regarding racial prejudice. But, so I'm assuming that those clauses would not be enforceable anymore, is that correct?
I'll be honest, I'd have to see the particular clause. The general concept with contracts is whatever the language of a contract is at the time it's written, if it was lawful at the time, then it remains lawful. Otherwise, you have the application of, conceptually anyway, of an ex post facto law. However, in the area of discrimination, that's a, it can be a different story. But normally, you know, general contract, legal principles applicable to contracts generally provide that, you know, if a contract is lawful at the time it's entered, and there's consent on, you know, and mutual consideration on both sides, then typically they are enforceable. If they are void against public policy, again, that introduces another issue. So I would have, before I could really make a definitive statement, it's a good question, but it's highly generalized, I'd have to see the language of the contract.
I guess what I'm wondering, the context is, that I'm wondering if that archaic language is still having an impact on transactions that are being made today, and if it is, is there anything we can do about it?
I'm also a licensed real estate broker, and I can tell you the real estate contracts in the state of Illinois don't have that language. Now, if I decide to sell you my house and we write something up on a napkin and I put discriminatory language in it, well then, like Jim said, it, you know, what's written there isn't necessarily the same, but state of Illinois licensed realtors don't have that language in their contracts. They all have a standardized document that they use. Downstate of Illinois, Cook County has a totally different document with many more pages. I do agree with Sharice, I think there's a lot of implicit biases that go on, and, you know, it may not be stated in an actual written word, but I think people are misled or misinformed verbally, and that discourages them from applying for homeownership. And I'm not sure what to do about that except to continue to educate the public as much as we can.
Other comments? Bill?
Just a question on the code enforcement part. So some of the CDBG money will cover some code enforcement time. Does that include the rental inspectors, or is that?
If they are inspecting in a targeted neighborhood, yes, it would include them. It's the person that's doing the property maintenance inspections, the grass weeds, junk debris type things, a third of that person's salary, and then a person that does the inspections. And that person is also kind of helping do the rehabs that we're doing, so.
Okay, thank you. Okay, yes, attorney, yes.
Let me further clarify for Councilmember Jacobson. Clearly, if a contract term in a contract at the time it's drafted is illegal, say contains redlining language, mortgage language, or other forms of discriminatory language, that's void. It's, if somebody entered into a contract, somehow, some kind of a contract that was entered into in 1950s, and let's say it's there today, same parties and all, then you get into the question, I mean, the contract presumably was legal then, that's the agreement between the parties unless it's truly void against public policy, and there are class actions that deal with that.
Okay, is this all we need to do as far as this time? So, thank you for the presentation. All right, and then I guess now I can ask about staff report, should there be one?
I have a real quick update.
Please do then.
On a couple of the transportation projects. So for Dr. Ellis and the lighting project on Kench, we're expecting a bid opening on March 20th. And just so Sheila can rest assured, we have a mechanism in place so that we know that we'll be paying out a sufficient amount of the CDBG money so that we won't lose any of that as part of those projects. And then we are planning on a bid opening for the EMCOR project on March 31st. So we're going to be busy opening bids in late March, and then we'll be busy getting a bunch of projects under construction.
That sounds very positive. Thank you very much. All right, I guess we'll go into now the body of our work tonight. Starting with item number six on the agenda, our resolution number 2020-03-012R, which is a resolution approving an intergovernmental agreement to upgrade the area-wide record management system, or known as ARMS. This is to be in compliance with the National Incident-Based Reporting System specifications. And we have our IT Director, Sanford Hess.
Good evening, everyone. This is a very similar item to one that we discussed a few weeks ago, and in this case, it's a smaller dollar amount with the City of Champaign. The prior one was a larger dollar amount with the county sheriff's office. In both cases, those entities have received a grant, and that grant has a requirement for a certain amount of that money to be spent towards this new standard for incident reporting. And the City of Urbana, as the responsible agency for this computer system called ARMS, were doing this work anyway. So in these cases, we are then allowed to get some reimbursement from these two other agencies. In this case, it's the City of Champaign, $1,609.55.
Okay, any comments or questions? Mary Ellis?
So if I remember correctly, ARMS is being used by Parkland College, if I, no?
Actually, Parkland has read-only access.
Oh, they have read-only access. So is this for people, are the major players here, Champaign County and Champaign City, or does it extend beyond that?
It extends beyond that. It's, in addition to those two, it's also the University of Illinois Police and the Rantoul Police.
Okay. Are they going to be contributing funds towards this project as well?
Oh, no, only the City of Champaign and the sheriff's office got this grant. So those are the only two that had this.
So if this passes, what's the total amount that will be coming from both entities?
Combined, it's slightly more than $50,000.
And then how much is it costing us to do the work?
It's most of our effort, and we have one programmer. We're actually adding some additional time for another programmer, but we have one programmer, and it's pretty much his full-time task for all of 2020.
So does it cover like 75% of that person's salary?
At this point, no. At this point, it would probably closer to half of our costs in total. We have two people working on it, so it's probably, but we're, yes, that's all.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions? Is there a motion then?
I'll move to send Resolution Number 2020-03-012R, resolution approving intergovernmental agreement to upgrade the area-wide record management system to City Council with recommendation for approval.
I'll second.
And Mary Ellis, who seconds it? Other discussion at this time? Okay, all those in favor, be indicated by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that goes forward to the City Council. All right, next on the agenda is number seven, ordinance number 2020-03-007, an ordinance approving amendments to the City of Urbana Community Development Block Grant budgets in the annual action plans for the years, fiscal years, fiscal years 2014 to 2015, 2015 to 2016, 2016 to 2017, and 2017 to 2018, and fiscal year 2018 to 2019. Sheila Dodds has more to tell us.
There's actually two ordinances here. The second one is an ordinance revising the annual budget to include those reallocated dollars.
Mike?
Thank you. A few years ago, the HUD changed their way that they processed their grants. So typically, it was first in, first out, so if you didn't spend all of your 2014, it just rolled up and you spent it first in 2015. Well, with this budget change, if it wasn't approved in the 2014 budget and you ended up the year with money left in that grant line item, it stays there until you do this process to reallocate it. And typically, we don't ever spend 100% in a calendar year.
And typically, we don't ever spend 100% in a calendar year. So, this program, or this amendment is requesting these changes to just reallocate those old dollars into this year's current budget. And then, we plan on using that for capital improvement projects, such as the Kench Street Lighting. And I think there's some projects in the Dr. Ellis subdivision, and whatever other things that Public Works identifies as needs. Part of the process driving this is, we currently have to spend about $200,000 of this old money by May 1st, or we risk losing the funds. So, by doing this amendment, working with Public Works to get a project ready to move quickly, we'll be able to reallocate those monies and use them for Urbana.
And so, you're casting back through these other years for funds that hadn't been allocated or used?
Yeah, they hadn't been allocated, but they hadn't necessarily been used. So, you might guess you're going to spend $60,000 on housing rehab, and then at the end of the year, you spent $54,000. So, then that $6,000 needs to be reallocated. So, when you look at the amendment, there's, it looks like funny little, you know, numbers, but that's what is left in the pot of money, so we need to reallocate that.
And they hadn't been reallocated earlier?
No.
Okay, so we're going back and saving them?
Yes.
Other comments or questions? Yes, Jared?
I don't have a comment or question, but I'd make a motion.
Go ahead, please.
I'm going to move ordinance number 2020-03-007, an ordinance approving amendments to the City of Urbana Community Development Block Grant Budgets and actual annual action plans. I'm not going to read those again, but.
All of those.
I'll move that ordinance gets forwarded to the full City Council with a recommendation for approval.
Second.
And seconded by Sharice. Any comments, thoughts? Yes, Sharice?
So, my question is, the monies that are, that aren't used, they will be used in the same department, or these will be consolidated and then put toward particular other projects, or what? For, for example, you have the Urbana Senior Repair Service stuff, and all of that wasn't used up, but there's $8,000 that, that is, that can go, does it go toward the senior repair, or does it, can you put it anywhere?
We can put it anywhere, and we identified the Neighborhood Revitalization Line Item in the budget amendment to put these funds there for two reasons. One, we need to spend it by May 1st, and so it's going to need to be a large project that helps us do that. Where the senior repair program is projects that are $1,000. And we don't have 200 of them to do between now and May 1st. So, by reallocating those smaller pots, that doesn't take away what we currently have.
I bet in our ward, we could probably find 10.
And it doesn't take away from what we're currently doing. It just real allocates that older money.
Okay.
All right, so we have any more questions about this? Okay, we could have a vote. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
And any opposed? Okay, that passes, and we'll go forward with approval.
We also need to include the budget amendment ordinance.
Which is our next one, correct?
Okay.
All right. So, the next item is number eight, ordinance number 2020-03-008, an ordinance revising the annual budget ordinance, budget amendment number five concerning the, and the action plan amendment. Yes, Mary Ellis?
I think there's actually two different annual budgets here, if I'm reading this correctly.
Oh, yeah, number 10?
Number seven, I think, has two action plans. Am I reading that right?
Has two ordinances?
Right, it has two ordinances in number seven, and one of them is a budget.
Have I missed that? On the agenda?
Oh, my bad.
It's in the same memo.
Yeah, they're pinned together, yes, that's right. So, we are in the right place at the right time.
I'd like to make a motion to approve that ordinance.
Okay.
I shouldn't say approve, I should say, send to the full council with a recommendation for approval.
Very good, Jared.
And still second.
And thank you, Sharice. And is there other questions? Eric?
We're talking about the budget amendment including the Carl payment, is that correct?
No.
Not yet, not yet.
Oh, okay.
Number 10.
We're still on the Community Development Action Plan.
Got it, okay.
Seven and eight.
All right. Okay, those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
And any opposed? There are none, so we will see that forward in our next meeting. Okay, number nine was withdrawn, so now we're going to talk about number 10, ordinance number 2020-03-010, an ordinance revising the annual budget ordinance, budget amendment number six, omnibus. And that's with Elizabeth Hannon.
So, we have several items included on this budget amendment. One is taking the funds that were in the special reserve fund and budgeting an expense to repay as ordered by the court, a certain portion of Carl property taxes that we were holding. We have, actually, because we were ordered by the court to do this, we have already cut the check, so this is kind of a follow-up to make the budget right. The second one relates to the new position for the comprehensive plan, and so this would establish the budget to get us through the end of the current fiscal year. That will then appear in future budgets as a one-time expense to round out that three-year term. Also, for many years, the Illinois Law Enforcement Training Standards Board paid directly when we sent officers to the police training institute for their training. They are no longer able to do that due to some financial challenges, and so we now have to budget for that. And hopefully, somewhere in the future, we will get a portion of that reimbursement back when they do have some funds. So, that is an increase in the budget. And then, the other item included on this budget amendment relates to overtime in the fire department. This can sometimes be difficult to predict because of our need to maintain a certain minimum staffing level on all of the pieces of fire apparatus that we operate. And we actually track overtime at a very detailed level, about 50 different categories of overtime in the fire department. So, it appears that this year, we're headed for about 14,500 hours of overtime, which is up substantially from the last couple of years. So, again, that goes back to the need to maintain minimum staffing, and it's driven by the third vacation slot that's proving to have higher use than we anticipated when we approved the most recent labor agreement. It's also driven by use of other leave time and sick leave for both employees and for them to care for family members. And I will point out that Chief Losz is here in the room. If we want to talk about that in more detail, we can get him up here to help with that. This really, in terms of the Carl property tax repayment, I just want to mention that that doesn't have any impact on the general fund, doesn't have any impact on our more positive forecast that we've seen, because that money's been set aside in another fund for a number of years just in the event that this occurred.
Yes. Okay, questions? Start with Jared.
So, the, obviously, the big standout here is the OT in the fire department, especially considering it looks like almost doubling that third slot vacation time from last year to this year. Is this going to be something where, I mean, before we even get into the reasons why that's changed so much, is this something we're looking at in our recurring expenses versus revenues problem?
So, possibly, in some of these categories, there might be an impact on recurring expenses going forward. Some of these are just due to unique events and won't recur. So, the chief and I have spent many hours poring through all the stats on their overtime use and trying to break that down. So, I don't expect the need will be this high next fiscal year, but will it be higher than the current budget? Possibly.
And the chief is available if we need to ask him things?
I bet Mary Ellis has three questions for him.
I was going to start with the third vacation slot.
Okay, okay. Mary Ellis, who?
If you could, Chief, if you wouldn't mind coming up and describing to us what this is, and, yeah.
Chief Losz, then.
Yep.
Good evening.
This is, for the audience, this is what we're looking at, the distribution by years and by category. So, obviously, the third slot and the Kelly days, those are the two big ones right there that have really increased.
Sure. During this past negotiations, the third slot was negotiated into the collective bargaining agreement, which creates the guarantee for the firefighters to pick a third vacation day. That third vacation day, it's, that's, that gives the availability of three firefighters to pick a vacation day on each shift day. So, if three of us, at vacation pick time, wanted July 4th off, then three of us would have a guaranteed pick for that day. So, that, it's just, then if somebody calls in sick, if somebody's injured, those days are guaranteed, so it creates overtime automatically.
So, that third vacation day, there's only three days in the entire year that they're allowed to do that, is that right?
No, there's, it's every day. I mean, 365 days a year, they could, they can pick. Three people can guarantee any day. So, there's three people that could be guaranteed off every day of the year.
But for the individual who wants to take the day, do they only get to use that third day three times during the year?
No, if they, say I would have five vacation days to use for 2020, I have five opportunities to be the third pick.
Oh, to be the third pick, okay.
Yeah, third pick.
Yeah, all right. And then, just so the audience understands what a Kelly day is?
Sure. A Kelly day is a reduction in the FLSA, the Fair Labor Standards Act. So, it reduces the number of hours so that it brings in line with the federal legislation of the amount of hours that the firefighters work. Without that, they work 2,912 hours, and I believe, Elizabeth, they're at 2,840? I think they're 2,840 hours. Normal work week for 40 hours, 2,080. And if they don't get any Kelly days at all, their average work week, or the average annual hours are 2,912 hours.
So, what, why do we have such an increase here?
In Kelly time?
Yeah.
Those are Kelly time negotiator, the CBA? Okay.
No, no Kelly days.
Okay. I'm not, I, I'm not exactly sure. The big increase, because they have two Kelly days, they've had two Kelly days as far as I know for a couple of contracts.
Okay, all right. So, yeah, as I look at those two, those are the two big differences. And the others, obviously, are larger, but not to that extreme.
Right.
Are those two Kelly days per month?
No, that's per year.
Per year?
Yes.
Like it's like a wild card day?
Yeah, it's just, it's a reduction in the hour, so they, they, they get two 24-hour shifts off that they can schedule, and it reduces their annual hour so that the stipend or pay doesn't have to, we don't have to pay that extra check to the firefighter at the end of the year.
Is that like comp time?
Comp time, I don't know, it's not like comp time at all.
I'm trying to understand the Kelly.
So, the, so the way that we do Kelly days here at the City of Urbana is different than what I've seen in other places? It really kind of functions almost like two additional vacation days.
Okay.
They can schedule them.
Okay, how many firefighters do we have exactly?
We have 59 within the department, 52 on shift. We have one shift with 19, two with 18. So, we use that, the one shift that has 19, to kind of backfill for some of the injuries, illnesses, things like that, to help offset some of the overtime.
And how have the, have the calls increased this year, this fiscal year, as opposed to the last fiscal year or something?
Yeah, we're at probably 100 calls.
Okay. I'm just trying to understand.
And I will, I will get you a, an annual report, I promise. We're working on the annual report now, so we'll get that for you.
Okay, Bill Brown?
Yeah, and just to clarify, in case people are watching at home, those aren't millions of dollars on the left side. That's hours with a decimal point and three zeros after it.
Absolutely.
So, the total amount for all the overtime difference was $220,000. Is that right?
Yes.
Thanks.
Oh, yes, Jared?
Chief, would you say, and I know this isn't maybe something we're expecting to recur, Elizabeth, perhaps we'll see a reduction. An increase still in the past, but a reduction maybe from this year. Do you consider the fire department understaffed?
We, the, the one, like I said, the one shift has 19 right now. And that, that firefighter that we have on that shift is able to backfill anytime that we have time off. So, that, that does help. You know, it does help to reduce, you know, if there's injury, if there's an illness, then we, long-term especially, we can switch them over.
One of the things that we've looked at from time to time is at what point does it make sense to round out those other two shifts with an additional firefighter? Because at some point, when the overtime gets very large, it could be actually less expensive to add an additional firefighter to avoid the overtime. The last time we looked at that was, I want to say, at least a year ago. And it just, with the numbers that we were looking at at that time, it didn't make sense. But there's, there's also the other factor we have to consider is whether the amount of overtime is healthy.
Right. Well, I mean, I see 220,000, and I'm like, well, that's two FTEs to me right there in the fire department.
Yeah, I think that, I think the thing is that this is, this is a very unusual year, at least when you compare it to the last five years. So, what we need to look at it is, is it an anomaly? And it's going to go back to a more normal level next year? Or is this kind of what it's going to look like in the future? In which case, it probably would make sense to increase the staffing.
Okay. And Chief, are we going to see, in your annual report, maybe some insights into why we're seeing such an increase in, in calls this year over last year? I mean, 100 calls, it's a big increase, it sounds like. I don't know if statistically it is or not, but.
It's, it's, it's moderate. I mean, it really is not an exceptional amount. But yes, you will see the type of calls that we run on. A few pictures in there to kind of give you a little bit of an idea for what we did.
Other comments or questions here? Eric?
I guess I'm shifting to Carl. Is this payment, it's a legal question, I guess. Is this payment part of what's subject to appeal? And maybe, you know, depending on a higher court, we might get it back, or is this just going?
The whole case now is up on appeal, so every issue in the case on appeal, including the order that the judge entered. So, if the appellate court fully reverses, and let's say that's the end of the case, I assure you, it won't be, it'll go to, you know, at least there'll be a petition to the Illinois Supreme Court. And for all we know, a court could remand it back to the trial court for further proceedings of some kind. But in the event we prevail in the appellate court, and we hope we do, some good issues, and that's the end of the case, then we would get the money back because that order would be stricken that had ordered us to return to the treasure for distribution back to Carl.
The, I, maybe it's appropriate now to say, about a week ago, a little over a week ago, I sent to everybody on the council a couple of documents that pertained to tax-exempt hospitals, nonprofit hospitals, and question of appropriateness of that status. And I can't, I'm not commenting, I mean, we're in litigation, I'm not going to comment on it legally. But I will, I will say that one of the documents was a peer-reviewed publication from a journal on economics of health which listed profitability of hospitals in the United States, both for-profit and nonprofit. Measure of profitability was the, how, what was the difference on the average for each hospital stay between what the hospital collected and the expenses the hospital incurred? And Carl Hospital, by that measure, was the 10th most profitable. And Carl Hospital, by that measure, was the tenth most profitable hospital in the United States. So, that may or may not reflect, that, I guess it doesn't reflect on the legal question, that's for courts and lawyers to decide, but may reflect on the question of the logic and the justice of the situation in which we find ourselves.
Yes, Jared?
Non-Carl-related comment, just budgetary thing to either think about, not necessarily for comment, Elizabeth, but I know there's a certain illness that's on the tip of everyone's tongue these days, and the federal government has started urging local governments to make preparations, and as such, what is, generally speaking, the city's approach as far as finances are concerned to deal with something like this? I know any reaction in the community would probably be led by the health district, not by the city itself, but do we work with the regional task force to develop a plan for, you know, financial contribution from each government body for some, dealing with something like that? Should we start seeing cases in Champaign-Urbana?
So, I mean, I think that's still very much getting worked out, and Carol can probably comment that better than I can, but I will point out that this is one of the reasons where we always emphasize the importance of having a healthy fund balance, because, you know, it might be a tornado, it might be a recession, it might be coronavirus, and so we are prepared if, if there is a financial impact.
I know that the mayor was speaking to Julie Pride, the head of the Public Health District earlier, so she may have something to add, but as far as, we are, we are currently participating in the regional meetings around preparedness, and, you know, we, with some of the changes that we made in Public Works, we now have Scott Test leading our, you know, continuity of government planning, and, you know, we're taking very seriously, in the event that, you know, isolation is, is part of the equation for people, how do we, you know, which, which services do we prioritize, and, you know, the extent to which we could deliver services remotely? So, that's very much an active conversation right now.
Keep us in the loop.
And Mayor?
The message from Julie Pride today is things are changing by the minute, so, but we're in very close contact with the Public Health District, they'll be coordinating the, the community, county-wide, the community-wide response. We also have representation on the, I guess it's a task force, the John Dwyer, the emergency operations folks at the county are putting together, and in fact, there's a meeting tomorrow with representatives from the cities, the university, and various agencies, and so we're looking at what we do internally as a city to maintain operations going forward, plus also externally, what assistance the community is going to need to provide to people should they, for example, have to be isolated in a home for two weeks, and that sort of thing. So, we're, this county, I think, is way ahead of many counties in the state because of the leadership of the Public Health District, and she's really, you know, we're really not waiting for guidance from the federal government because it's not coming. So, so, once, once, we'll know more later this week, and then we'll let folks know where we are.
Thanks.
Okay, then, I guess, Mary Alice, and then Bob, Bill?
I just wanted to say that the university released a notification today that all students who were in Italy and in South Korea were immediately asked to come home because of the Level Four that was released by the State Department. They've also said that people who travel to a Level Two or Level Three country must self-quarantine for fourteen days if they come back to the community. And as you said, things change moment by moment, because I went to get a definitive list, and it was yesterday's, and it was out of date. So the State Department has reclassified Italy and South Korea as a Level Four. So just to make people aware, if you're planning spring break trips, check out what the status is before you leave and go on that.
Staycation is a great idea this year. Also, a very good website to go to is the Champaign-Urbana Public Health District website.
Bill Brown?
Yeah, and it is kind of related to the overtime because we don't want people needing to come in when they're sick. So, if, you know, and I see your notices sometimes that you're looking for somebody to come in to cover a shift, I don't know if I'm supposed to be getting those still, but I'm getting those on my phone. What happens if you can't cover a shift? Is it possible to just close one of the stations and have the other stations cover?
It's, it's very rare that we'll ever run short. You know, when, when they put out multiple notices like that, generally, it's somebody that is trying to find childcare so that they can get that childcare and then get in. But it's, it's very rare that we will ever run short, would not shut a station down, for sure, if, I don't want to say for sure, hopefully, we'd not get to that.
Alternative scenarios here, so I thought I'd bring that up.
Yes, I'd, hopefully, we'd never get to that point. We do have mutual aid agreements, so that if we ever run that short, we could, we would implement the mutual aid agreements so that we'd have backfill.
Yeah, and that would, if we shut down a department, a station, that would affect our rating also ultimately this year, right?
Absolutely.
We would lose our excellent rating.
That could, yes.
Could, essentially. All right, so that was the omnibus amendment, any other conversation about that? Yes, Jared?
No comments, but make a motion, move ordinance number 2020-03-010, ordinance revising the annual budget ordinance, budget amendment numeral six, be forwarded to the full council with recommendation for approval.
Second.
Seconded by Eric Jacobson. Is there any other comment or discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that gives word with the recommendation of approval. Okay, next, number eleven, resolution number 2020-03-013R, a resolution approving an intergovernmental agreement between the City of Urbana and the police pension fund. And we have Elizabeth, again.
So.
Working her very hard tonight.
So, as, as we've discussed before, we are in the process of moving all of the city's applications that run on the old AS400 computer away from that. One of the things that was on that computer was the payrolls for the, the two pension funds, both police and fire, and that, that work was done by an employee not in the fire department and not on her work hours. So as I discussed that with the pension board, because we were looking for a new solution to accomplish that work, we kind of came around to the, to the idea that the most cost-effective way to do that is to move that on to our Munis system. However, one of my concerns is that we not, that we not have somebody who's not a city employee, not an employee of the finance department in our payroll system, just in terms of keeping the data secure. And so we think this is much more cost-effective than, for example, hiring an outside accounting firm to do this work. And so, we negotiated an agreement with the police pension board, and we expect to, to have the fire pension board make the same agreement with us in the future, and so if we want to proceed with this, we need council to approve the intergovernmental agreement.
Okay, are there questions? Mary Alice?
Who was paying for this arrangement prior to, you said the person worked off, off city buildings?
Yeah, so the pension fund, each of the pension funds was paying that person.
Okay, so this is taking on a new responsibility for us?
Yes, and it would ultimately, in next year's budget, we would add a point two five FTE, so a ten-hour-a-week position to do this work. So, it's kind of a circular equation here. So we want the most cost-effective solution to get the work done, because it's a pension fund expense, it's going to come back to us in the end, no matter what, right? Either we pay it now or we pay it later through increased pension contributions.
We got to pay it either way.
And then, Mary Alice, again?
This is just a silly thing that I was reading through this, who is responsible for doing what, and so the director of finance is all over here, but I think that there might have been, I should have bookmarked it, it might have been a definition that said the finance, the head of the finance department, or those they deem qualified from here on out will be the finance director. Is that right? Because they're, all, all these duties are assigned to the finance director.
Yeah, so I'm, I'm going to delegate those duties?
I, I understand that, but I'm just trying to figure out, based on this document, does that document say that?
I think it does. I believe it does.
Okay. And you want to double-check so you don't increase your workload?
Cerise?
With the person that would be hired, is that, is that someone that's, is that someone that's already here and working, and you're just going to add to what they do, or are we actually going to hire a part-time person?
I'm going to explain this in general terms. We have a, a current city employee who does that, this work for the pension funds, who will be retiring at the end of June. We expect that we will be able to hire her back into this ten-hour position without benefits. So yes, it would be an increase of ten hours a week in staffing in finance.
Okay.
All right. Okay, other questions? Jared?
I'm going to make a motion to move resolution number 2020-03-013R, resolution approving this intergovernmental agreement between the City of Urbana and the police pension fund, be sent forward to the full council with a recommendation for approval.
Second.
Eric Jacobson seconds it. Jared, please never be sick. We depend upon you to be an engine here for activity.
Well, if you are sick, stay home.
For fourteen days.
I'll call in.
This is our new mantra, you can call in.
Yes, if you have a respiratory infection, call in.
All right, is there further discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Okay, that passes as well, and goes to city council. Our final item, resolution number 2020-03-014R, a resolution appointing the Home Resources Manager as authorized agent for the Illinois Municipal Retirement Fund in 2020. Yes, Elizabeth?
I think this is a human resource office.
Oh, what did I say? Home. Too many CD things happening tonight. This is the Human Resource Manager.
So, each city that participates in IMRF is required to designate an authorized agent who's responsible for signing off on various actions on behalf of the city, and the city council has to, has to approve that designation. So, and this was something that Todd Rant had done in the past in the new structure, we are going to assign this to Elizabeth Borman, who is the Human Resources Manager.
Any comments or questions for Elizabeth? Yes, Mary Alice, who?
I'll make a motion.
Dum.
On resolution number 2020-03-014R, resolution appointing the Human Resources Manager as the authorized agent for the Illinois Municipal Retirement Fund for 2020.
Second.
Cerise seconds it. Any further comments or questions, discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? That passes. Seeing no further, any, there's no other comments or announcements, I assume, seeing no other business at this time, be adjourned. I call as adjourners.